Eman.
Hello.
Well, hello, Mr. Mayor.
So we're going to go ahead and start it.
Okay.
The new fair trial is on his way. He's tied up on the business call as well.
All right.
Here's what we're going to do.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is our year-end results for 2024. So first, Ms. Jones is going to go through the general fund report out. And, you know, there are some good news in our, in our general fund. And then we also have our enterprise year-end to go through. So both airport and water will also come and make their presentations. So I will just kick it right off to Abby.
Thank you, City Manager. We'll jump right in. We will start with our statement as we normally do. And so we'll go through this statement, talk through some high-level summary before we dive deeper into the presentation. All right. As you can see here on this statement, all revenues have increased by 8.5% or $17.9 million when compared to 2023. Post-pandemic, this is the largest increase that we've seen, followed by the increase of 6.3% or $12.4 million that we saw from 2021 to 2022. The largest increase is within the income tax category. You may recall last year, when we presented this information, we saw a slight decrease in income tax compared to 2022. And so our projections included a very small increase in 2024. However, as you can see, income tax went up 7.8% or $11.9 million when compared to 2023 numbers. In the first column, where we have the original budget, this is what I'm alluding to. We had budgeted $155 million. However, we received 165.2. Last year, we received about $153.3 million. So we were, we were assuming that we were going to continue on the same trend. However, that didn't come true. Local government fund is another revenue category that is worth noticing. It declined by almost 90% or $4.5 million. As you may recall, due to the legislative changes at the state level for the revenue collected from the traffic enforcement camera program, we have been seeing a reduction in our local government fund starting in August of 2023. That's when we started to receive zero revenue in our local government funds. Starting in July of 2024, we started to receive the revenue. However, it is a very small amount. The total local government fund revenue equals to about $560,000. So it is a small amount compared to when you see the numbers from 2020, which was $7 million, 2021, which was $7.9 million, and 2022, which was $8.5 million. And there is a reason why we're receiving a small amount because the local government fund is still being reduced by the amount of revenue that we're collecting from the traffic enforcement camera program. Eight of the 10 revenue categories performed better than the same time last year. Other revenue saw the largest increase of 73.2% or $6.6 million. 2.9 million of the 6.6 million is from increased investment earnings. And that's because of the higher interest earnings that we have seen over the past few years. In addition to the higher interest earnings, our split between the general fund versus all other funds, general fund saw a slight increase in that split since we have started to spend down our ARPA DRP project funding. And so that's why we're seeing that increase in the interest earnings. And then the other increase is from the transfers that we're doing from the photo enforcement fund. In 2023, the transfer amount was $1.5 million. And in 2024, that transfer amount was $5 million. So there is, there is an increase. Because of those two things, we're seeing that $6.6 million increase in the other revenue category. When compared to the budget, revenues performed better and were 1.9 million above the projections and had a 0.8% budget variance. The biggest increase in dollars was the other revenue category, which was $1.3 million above the projections. Expenditures in the bottom of the table here. For 2024, we're under budget, which is a favorable variance, by 4.9 million or 1.9%. And we're 12.7 million above the 2023 amount. Personnel costs, we're $500,000 under budget, but 9.4 million or 6.6% higher than 2023. Majority of this personnel expense increase is in fire and police. As you know, Jeanette will talk through more in detail as we move through the presentation. 5.9 million of personnel costs were paid for by the ARPA grant. And so if it wasn't for that, that funding, we would have seen a higher increase in our personnel cost. Contracts and materials and other uses were up 3.7 million or 9.2% compared to 2023. Much of this is for computer maintenance and payment control service fund, which again, we will discuss more in detail a little bit down the presentation. At the end of 2024, sources exceeded uses by $11.9 million. And this is largely due to the income tax coming in higher than anticipated and the other revenue category, which was also higher than anticipated. Okay, so here is our income tax. For income tax, net collections in 2024 increased by, like I said, 11.9 million or 7.8%. Holdings increased by 4.3% or $5.8 million. This amount of the increase, I should say, is similar to the increase that we saw from 2022 to 2023. However, I do want to point out one thing. In 2024, we had five Friday months. Last time when that happened was in 2018. And so when we have the extra five Friday month, we are going to see that a little bump compared to last year. If it wasn't for that little bump, we wouldn't have seen that difference of $5.8 million from 2023 to 2024. Business profits, on the other hand, is going, for lack of a better word, bonkers. Following the year decline of 34.4% in 2023, we realized a 44.8% increase in business profits in 2024, which is $6.9 million. And as you can see in the bottom table, you can see the month-over-month business profit collections. The month of July is when we received most of it. We saw a $6 million increase in month of July compared to what we received in 2023. Individual tax receipts are also slightly down. They are down by almost $200,000 compared to 2023. And refunds are lower than the 2022 peak. 2022, we saw $4.8 million in refunds. We are seeing $3.9 million in refunds in 2024, which is higher than what we saw in 2023, which is expected because our income tax collections are higher in 2024. But just to point out, the refunds are still slightly lower than that peak that we saw in 2022. Right. So with that, I am going to hand it over to Jeanette. Jeanette is going to walk us through the revenues and expenditures trend.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to start with EMS fees. This is one of the revenue categories that had a fairly significant year-over-year revenue growth. And I just wanted to highlight it as we talk this through. So at the end of 2024, EMS revenues, they were up a little over 20%, or about $1.2 million. If you notice in the chart below, one thing I do want to point out is that five-year trend from 2020, revenues are almost up 50% since 2020. So in 2020, we were just at 4.7 million, and now we're over $7 million for 2024. So it's quite significant growth there over that five-year period. But then when you look at the runs or the incident activity up in the top bar chart, you will see that despite us increasing in revenue in 2024, the incidents that were responded to actually went down about 4.2%. And so there's a little bit of nuance there. So there's a lag in revenue. It's almost like property taxes. Sometimes they're paying on to link with prior-year payments. So we can't exactly say for sure the activity in 2024 is related to receipts in 2024. So it's potentially likely over the next few years or as we go on, we might see some declines in terms of the revenue that we received due to that decline in activity that we saw in 2024. But good news, especially since 2020, jumped up in terms of revenue received. The next two areas I want to talk about, Abby kind of highlighted this. I think we've talked this through all year long for these two categories. The local government fund in particular, as Abby mentioned, that is down about $4.5 million from 2023. As you know, that state law reducing our local government fund revenue due to our enforcement program is completely eroding our revenues. And in the bottom table, you can see.
And we get penalized for keeping our citizens safe.
Sure. But for this reduction, our revenue for the year for 2024 should have been about $8.2 million. So we really took a hit. There's almost a $7.7 million reduction in terms of the revenue coming into the general fund. And so that's one of the big ones we'll continue to monitor and highlight going forward as we operate that program. The other one we've kind of talked through a lot are the property taxes. We all know the revaluation and reappraisal, kind of three-year reappraisal will happen in 2023. So 2024 was the first year we started seeing those tax collections come in. So that is some of that significant growth that you see of $1.8 million over 2023. So the next revale, and I know they've already started. I saw an article, started work on the 2026 one. That's the full reappraisal will occur and that they're underway doing it now. But likely over the next year, we'll see kind of some stability in our property tax revenues. But huge gains along with that increase. I know, I think residential property values increased about 34% when they did the 2023 revaluation. So we're seeing some of that change in terms of our property taxes. All right. And then I will dive a little bit deeper into our other revenue. Abby hit on some of the areas in here, but I'll go in a little bit more detail. So overall, for other revenue, it is up about 73.2% or $6.6 million. A large portion of that, as you can see in the table, is from that transfer in line. And Abby alluded to it. Part of that is the increase that we did in terms of the transfer of photo enforcement revenue into the general fund to kind of meet that gap that we saw with our $4.5 million reduction in the local government fund revenue. So you can see the transfer that we budgeted in 2024 was $3.1 million higher than what we did in 2023. Some other areas I just wanted to highlight. In terms of the investment income, that was a huge one. And that lives, it lives within that miscellaneous line. It looks like it's kind of hidden. But that is driving that almost $2.8 million increase in the miscellaneous category. And one thing to note, Abby said this, that ARPA revenue that we have, that we're earning investments on, and some of the changes with the investment strategy, in terms of short-term investments, we're earning a little bit more income. So there were changes to that. Our investment income in 2023 totaled about $4.3 million into the general fund. And you can see the great performance. In 2024, we brought in about $7.1 million in terms of investment income into the general fund. So great story there. You will notice the cable franchise fee is another one I want to point out just because it looks like, it looks like there's a big change from '23 to '24. But what happened in '23 is there, we get quarterly revenue payments in. And in 2023, there were three-quarters worth of revenue. And then that lagging quarter hit in 2024. So that's where you're seeing that kind of difference play out. But it should all even out as we get back to our four-quarter revenue payments. And then moderate declines in some of the other categories. You can see in terms of the building and facility rentals and the special assessment category, moderate declines overall. But for this category, we are up about $6.5 million. All right. And getting into the expenditures. As Abby mentioned, overall, the personnel expenses grew about 5.7%. And this is inclusive of us needing an adjustment for the ARPA personnel costs that we were able to shift to the grant. So you can see that in 2024, we were able to kind of carve out about $5.9 million of grant-related personnel costs that we were able to move back to the general fund. So but for that, if we were to include those in the general fund, if we had to include them, our expenses would have gone up about 6.6%. So that's almost a $1.6 million difference that would have occurred year-over-year. In particular, the sworn wages. So one thing I want to point out there. So the sworn wages is up about $2.8 million, that last kind of line above the subtotal. And that's largely due to some of the retro payments due to the finalization of the labor agreements with police. So due to when they occurred, we had to kind of go back and do some retro payments totaling about $1.8 million to correct those adjustments. So that is a large driver of that year-over-year increase in terms of the sworn wages line. Overtime in terms of civilian and sworn is up. On the sworn overtime side, you'll see an increase of almost 26%. So some of that is due to, we still have continued staffing shortages. You'll hear the same thing on the food side, specifically in fire, due to the cross-staffing of that extra engine following the solution of the pilot in 2023 that we kept the extra engine. So that is the extra cost in the sworn overtime expenses to staff that extra engine. And then just on the civilian overtime side, we still have continued vacancies in especially like waste collection for public works. That's continual staffing turnover that they still have to staff those mandatory frontline services. So that's where you're seeing some of that increase year-over-year. All right. On the contracts and materials side. So overall, contracts and materials were up about 9.2%. So this is inclusive of other uses. We call them other uses. There's some other transfers of cash, just kind of miscellaneous transfers. And a lot of times they cover things like training, our professional development, our coins that are paid that we have to kind of put some money away for. So those are other kind of miscellaneous things. Exclusive of that, our other kind of normal contracts and material expenses increased by about $2.4 million year-over-year. In particular, in the maintenance category, that's up almost $1.2 million year-over-year. And that's some of those computer and technology software maintenance agreements that are increasing. We see this almost every year as we kind of take on your software improvements, making improvements, those expenses increase. The payments to internal service funds is another one I want to highlight. So we were working on an analysis to analyze the fleet shop. And probably, as you know, if you've taken your car out, fleet hourly rates are quite high. And due to some of those continual wage increases in our fleet shop, we had to increase the hourly rate that we charge internally. We are still almost half of what we're charged, what's charged in the private sector. But in order to keep up with those budgeted wage increases, we needed to make sure that the fleet shop, their rate was adjusted to match so that they had some financial solvency to ensure the shop status quo. Additionally, on the internal service funds for the fleet shop, there was just a higher need for repairs of vehicles, especially with keeping waste collection vehicles up and running. There was a higher need for repair services in addition to that rate increase. So that is driving that $1.5 million decrease year-over-year. Supplies and materials, we are still seeing some of that inflationary pressure. So that is up almost 9.2%. That's still a lingering thing from the pandemic. We still have those inflationary cost increases. And then some moderate decreases. These increases were offset by the utility costs. They were down slightly for our, a little bit lower street lighting costs for the city, and then waste disposal costs. We had slightly lower expenses for recycling year-over-year. And then I will pass it back to Abby to go with the big picture.
All right. So next two slides, we will pass through and see how we are comparing 2024 to 2020 for both revenues and expenditures. For revenues, income tax remained the largest revenue source in 2024, making up 72.4% of the general fund revenue. Income tax over the last five years has hovered between 71% and 74% of the total revenue. So as you can see, it's right in the middle there. Of the remaining categories, 27.6%, which makes up the nine other revenue categories. 16.5% of the revenue is generated from waste collection, other charges to services, and other revenue. Overall, revenue increased by 22% or $41.2 million compared to 2020. Of that 41.2 million, income tax, as we talked about, is the largest source of revenue, increased by 31.4 million. Other revenue increased by $5.3 million. EMS increased by 2.3 million. Waste collection increased by 2.2 million. And these increases are offset by the reduction in local government fund, which went down $6.4 million compared to 2020. Other revenue, as we've talked about it throughout the presentation, investment earnings and the transfer from the photo enforcement fund is what's making up that increase in the other revenue category. EMS revenue, the runs are down in 2024 compared to 2023. However, they are up by about 2% when we compare to 2020. And as Jeanette mentioned earlier, EMS revenue does have that lag. And so because of that lag, we are seeing that increase in 2024, even though the run volume is down. For workers, for waste collection, waste collection revenue is based on CPI increases. And so we do increase the waste collection rate based on CPI annually. 2023, when we had high inflation, our CPI rate was 8.3%. And 2024, our CPI rate was 3.5%. Normally, the CPI is between 1 and 3%, but because of that high inflation, we saw those higher CPI increases in waste collection revenue. And because of that, waste collection is another category where we have lag in revenue. There is, depending on which quarter was billed to which neighborhood, there is a lag in revenue. And so that's why we're seeing that lag in the waste collection revenue and seeing that increase. All right. So as far as the big picture goes on the expenditure trend, personnel cost again is the largest cost for the general fund. It makes up 64.7%. Generally, personnel cost is about 70% of the total expenditures. But as you can see, contracts and materials makes up 18.6% and investments makes up 16.8%. We have been able to do some additional investments for the last few years because we have performed better. And so because of that higher investments amount, personnel costs are slightly lower than what they normally are as percentage of the total general fund budget. Excluding investments, expenses increased by 19.1% or $30.9 million when we compare 2024 to 2020. Personnel, including the ARPA grant costs that are in our fire and police department, grew by 16.5%. In contracts and material, grew by 29.7% when we compare ourselves to 2020. The personnel cost is largely associated with the annual wage increases that we've seen. And that equals to about $21.4 million over the last five years. If we were to compare ourselves to 2020, we have, we have added $21.4 million worth of personnel cost to our budget. And then the pandemic-related supply chain disruptions did suppress the spending of contracts and material in 2020 and 2021. And so when we compare ourselves to see how much we've spent or how far we've grown in our contracts and materials spending in 2024, we are seeing that higher number, which is almost 30%. And that largely has to do with us suppressing the funding in 2020. All right. Next, we have the 2024 transfers. Some of the year-end transfers represented in the 2024 revised appropriation. And so they will look familiar to you. At the top right corner, we have Your Dollar, Your Neighborhood. These three items include people's promise, street resurfacing, and park upgrades are funded from the issue nine funding. 2024 is the last year for issue nine funding. Starting in 2025, we will have, we will start to see the issue six funding. Other investments, including capital improvements of 8 million and capital equipment of 8.1 million, which are detailed on the left-hand side, we'll discuss in just a little bit. Next, we have the development fund, which you can see is at 3.25 million. This development fund transfer equals to pretty much two things. One is our annual arcade payment, which is about $1.6 million. And approximately $1.3 million is our tax sharing payment that we make to the Vandalia Butler School District that's associated with the jobs that were created at the airport. Most of these are in either TIFs or pre-1990 CRA, where we have to share half of our income tax with them. Our income tax, as you saw, has grown, but so has our liability for the payments that we make to the Vandalia Butler School District. Next, we have the $5.4 million of demolition and firepower removal. This $5.4 million includes our annual contribution of $1 million for the demolition. In addition to that, we've added $2.4 million transfer at the year end for the three-year contract with Montgomery County Land Bank. And then additionally, we added the $2 million transfer during the second revised appropriation for that firepower removal. Catalytic investments, which are 4 million. That includes the $2.5 million for the Center City Development and $1.5 million for future development activities. Other departments are reported at 2.2 million. $600,000 is for paramedic training program, which we did talk about at the final revised appropriation. We are providing training to get our paramedics certified. Next item we have is the $400,000 for the 27th pay. You are all familiar with this. It comes around approximately every 11 years. So that when it does come around, we do not have this sudden surge in expenses. Employee development is $280,000. That transfer supports the HR program. And then various departmental capital, which is 800, almost $900,000. This was originally budgeted and sourced from the general fund. So we are doing the transfer out so that departments can continue to move forward with their programs that they had originally budgeted but weren't able to fully complete in 2024. The $800,000, majority of the $800,000 is for the citywide security camera improvement program and in-cap navigation system in the public works department. Next, we have $71,000 for grants and special revenue fund. $45,000 of that $71,000 is for grant cash matches. This is to take advantage of grant cash matches. Normally, we have about 90% grant and 10% cash matches. So whenever we are able to take advantage of and leverage funding, we set aside funding for that. And so $45,000 is for that grant cash matches. In addition to that, we have $25,000 for the community paramedicine program. That is to fund the cash deficit in that program. That, that's the total, that's $71,000. All in all, we have $39.4 million of investments, which is about the same amount we had last year, slightly higher. Last year, we had $36.3 million in investments. So it's slightly higher, but about the same. And then lastly, we have the local fiscal recovery plan transfer. So we transferred $36 million, which is our revenue replacement calculation from the ARPA to the general fund. But once we transfer that, we were able to keep some of that towards the general fund. And then we turn around and transfer 25.4 million of that to fund the data recovery plan. On the left-hand side, as I mentioned, we have the capital improvement details. As you can see, the 2024 original CIP allocation was $2.7 million. We reduced this allocation to by $2.5 million so that we can do that transfer for the Center City improvements. Next, we have $2.6 million for thoroughfare and residential resurfacing. In addition to that, we also transfer almost $2.2 million for the disaster recovery data central build in preparation for NATO. As you may recall, we transfer $1.5 million so that we can make some permanent improvements in our city. For the 2026 capital equipment and improvement, we were, because 2025 is non-debt year and 2026 is a debt year. So in hopes of us pre-funding some of those, if we didn't need to utilize the capital equipment and capital improvement that set aside $300,000 in 2026, we'll be able to utilize that in 2027 because 2027 is again a non-debt year. We also transferred four hundred thousand dollars for capital computer refresh program. This we talked in length with you all during the revised appropriation process. This is to fund the computer refresh because Microsoft is no longer going to support on non-Windows eleven, starting in October of twenty twenty five. So this is the pre-funding of that program. And lastly, we have six hundred thousand dollars for contingents. Next section is for the capital equipment. For capital equipment, the total original allocation were one point seven million dollars. In addition to that original allocation, we also transferred almost one point two million dollar to fund the trash trucks. We transferred one point three million dollars to fund two fire apparatus. In addition to that, we transferred one million dollars to fund the aviation fire truck. And then we have hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars to fund five fire staff vehicle. And lastly, we have two point eight million dollars to fund thirty four police. So those are your transfers. Next, we have the department variance. Department variance, the last column is what I am talking about is at ninety eight point eight percent, which is a really good news. Last year, our department variance was ninety eight point five percent. And so we did better than last year. We were able to spend almost an entire budget for the general fund departments. Excluding the encumbrances, our variance is, which is the middle column there, ninety six point five percent. For management budget, our metric is to have this variance between zero to three percent, meaning less than three percent. And as you can see, we will be meeting that metric thanks to the departments being prudent in spending their budget as allocated. All right, so here is our employment chart. This is a significantly adjusted data. From the cycle peak of February twenty twenty to April twenty twenty, the region lost sixty thousand nine hundred jobs or fifteen point five percent of the job base. Since then, we recovered. As of July of twenty twenty four, we saw a new peak, which was three hundred and ninety two thousand nine hundred job, which was a an addition of sixty one thousand two hundred jobs. However, since July's peak, we have lost some ground. We've lost about three thousand jobs. So compared to the peak of April twenty twenty, we are sitting at fifty six thousand eight hundred more jobs. Okay, so here are economic indicators. The first chart shows the three-month moving average of median wage growth. And as you can see, it has been declining since the July twenty twenty two peak. As of December twenty twenty four, the growth is four point two percent, which is two point five percent lower than twenty twenty two, July twenty twenty two peak. The chart in the bottom, which somewhat mimics the chart above, shows the CPI. The CPI peaked in June of twenty twenty two at nine point one percent. The CPI is related to twelve months earlier. At the end of twenty twenty four, the CPI was two point nine percent. And so this tells us that we are still seeing increase in cost. However, that increase is more slowly and gradually going. The next chart we have is the employment growth chart. In Dayton region, we lost ground as of last quarter of twenty twenty four. The employment growth since February twenty twenty peak for Dayton MSA saw one percent decline, which meant there are four thousand one hundred less jobs. We saw a peak in July of twenty twenty four and then started to decline where we are seeing the divergence of the two lines between state and Dayton MSA. The state of Ohio is seeing a steady upward trend. As of December twenty twenty four, there is an increase of one point four percent, which equates to adding about eighty thousand four hundred jobs from the February twenty twenty peak.
Are there drivers of that specific divergence or we just don't know yet?
So the next chart shows the unemployment rate. And anytime we have, we see a decline in employment, we see a rise in unemployment rate, which is what's happening. This data is comparing December twenty twenty three to December twenty twenty four. And as you can see, at the state of Ohio level, December twenty twenty three, the unemployment rate was three point one percent. It has ticked up a little bit to four point two percent. For Montgomery County, the rate was three point three percent and now is at four point seven percent. But the largest increase we're seeing is in Dayton. Dayton was at three point nine percent and now we're at five point seven percent unemployment.
Do we know the leading industries or sectors or just too early to tell?
We do have sectors. Give me a minute.
It's a little more diversion than I would have expected.
Okay, I'm not able to get to it. We can we can provide you the chart with which sectors have seen the increases and which sectors have seen the decreases.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, this is our Dayton Recovery Plan update. As you can see, all of the projects that have awarded or that have been awarded the funding have all of the awarded contracts. We have moved forward to three contracts. We have brought forward. What's remaining is about seven contracts that will come before you go. And so we're moving in the right direction as far as the Dayton Recovery Plan taking action. As of, this data is reflective of activity as of January twenty seventh. As of January twenty seven, we awarded contract totals to seventy seven point seven million. And we have spent so far thirty three point two million dollars. And I also want to note that eight of the, in totality, eight projects have been completed so far. Okay, in summary, revenues increased, as we said earlier, at an astonishing eight point five percent or seventeen point nine million dollars in twenty twenty four. We did not expect revenues to go up by that amount, like you said. When we were doing the projections and when we met with our revenue advisors committee, the the thought was, because we didn't see movement in twenty twenty three, that in twenty twenty four, we were going to follow similar trends. However, that is not what happened. So after stellar growth in twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two, a decline of thirty four point four percent in twenty twenty three happened in the business profits category. However, again, we found it in twenty twenty four and we saw an increase of forty four point eight percent. Although revenues were point eight percent or one point nine million dollar over budget, three of the ten revenue category did see a negative budget variance. Personnel costs grew six point six percent or nine point four million dollars over twenty twenty three. This is a large amount. And as Jeanette mentioned earlier, it has to do with our wage growth. Plus, we had to. It has to do with our our normal wage growth. And in addition to that, we finalized the police contract at the end of twenty twenty four. And so the retro pay is adding to that that nine point four million dollar increase. Contracts and material and other uses increased by nine point two percent or three point seven million dollars compared to twenty twenty three. And this largely has to do with the supply chain disruptions and the delays that we saw. They are easing up. And so we are able to purchase things quicker than what we used to be able to purchase them. We are not waiting six, seven, eight, twelve months. And so for the most part, we are able to purchase as planned. And that's why we're seeing that increase along with some of the inflationary cost increases, which is adding to that nine point two percent increase. Strong revenue performance from income tax and investment earnings meant that the planned use of our revenue replacement to balance the budget was not needed. This also allowed us for another year of strategic investments, specifically in police, fire, public works, and planning department, which positions us for the future organizational demands. And we are able to plan and prep so that when those costs do come up for those investments, we have the funding set aside. And that is the conclusion of the.
Misses, questions? Just one, and I want to, like a blast from decades ago. I just want to thank everybody for remembering about the extra payroll. When I started, I was I was in the end of a commission that had forgotten about it. For whatever reason, changes city managers, changes staff. And so we were finishing paying a huge bill because nobody thought ahead. So thank you, institutional memory. Thank you, people planning ahead. Just want to put that out.
Next, we have aviation.
Very good. Thank you, ladies.
Good afternoon, commissioners, mayor, city manager. Thank you. My name is Daniel Zank. I'm the deputy director of aviation. I brought with me today Anna Stamper. Anna is the new finance manager for aviation. She's been with us for five months and did a fantastic job. She comes to us from Air Source, where she was a finance manager as well. She will be doing the bulk of the lift today, talking about the aviation departments finances. I wanted to start by just giving you a high-level overview or highlights, if you will, of twenty twenty four. And then I'll leave it to you to talk about the details. So it was a very productive year. Before, we saw a lot of growth. We saw Jovi Aviation come to the airport, create about thirty jobs, leasing out our whole post office building, starting the engineering and some development of that post office building. They also have intentions of manufacturing facility, which will hopefully overall create about two thousand jobs. We're still in talks with them about that that option to that lease, but we're hoping to make some progress here in a couple of months. We saw Premier Aviation to the FBO contract from Stevens Aviation. Premier is a company out of Florida. They've also recently expanded and have obtained a second FBO out on the airfield just recently over in our Center Two area, which we, which is known as ASI. And they are growing and developing their FBO facility as well. So that's exciting news. SNC or Sierra Nevada Corporation, as you know, in attendance today at the DBC Economic Forum. SNC was awarded Project of the Year for their MRO two facility, as well as breaking ground for their MRO three and four. That's going to create about three hundred fifty jobs for the region. So that's exciting news. We also got to see the first seven forty seven for SNC two. That happened in July of this year. And the second one actually came in in November. So that was exciting to see they continue the ground. We had a successful airshow this year. It was our fiftieth anniversary of the airshow, seventy five thousand participants in attendance. And we had the Blue Angels as our main show, very exciting. And many more successes with our air camp and working with other students to bring them out to the airport and show them what aviation careers are available. Again, this was a growth year. We saw an increase in employments as well as an increase in revenue. I'll stop right there and then we'll turn it over to you for the details and show them through our financials.
Let me make sure I do this right. If I click, if I roll down, oh, there we go. I know how to change the slides. All right, well, this is a little bit of an overview slide. I think we'll probably just jump right into the financials because I know that's what you guys are here to see. So we'll start with the final twenty twenty four budget. I'm just going to talk about the numbers here and then we'll dive into the key drivers for the rest of the rest of the slides. So the Department of Aviation ended twenty twenty four with about six hundred forty six thousand employments. That's a three point nine percent increase over twenty twenty three and is a fourteen point two percent increase since twenty twenty one. Starting at the top with airline revenue, it's up about three hundred and forty five thousand compared to twenty twenty three. Non-airline revenue is up about one point two million or six point three percent compared to twenty twenty three. And under non-airline revenues, parking revenue increased about seven hundred eighty four thousand or ten point three percent compared to twenty twenty three. Concession revenue increased about one hundred and seventy one thousand or seventeen point six percent. And then we also drew down a total of about three point eight million of Krista and ARPA relief grant funds in twenty twenty four. And all total sources, including rescue grants, are up about one hundred and twenty five thousand dollars or point three percent compared to last year. Total uses or total uses have increased one point nine million or five point seven percent compared to twenty twenty three. But they're one point six million or four point three percent better than budget. Personnel costs are up about eight hundred and nine thousand or eight point five percent, but remain four hundred and thirteen thousand or three point eight percent lower than budget. Contracts and materials are up by about two point one million or sixteen point six percent, but are seven hundred and sixty eight thousand or five percent better than budget. And our capital projects costs are about, down about one point nine million or forty nine percent, but we're almost right at budget. Net that all together, and our sources over uses leaves us with a positive one point three million to end the year. From an operating perspective, airline revenue makes up thirty two percent of total operating revenue. It's about three hundred and forty five thousand percent. Airline revenue is up compared to twenty twenty three, and that's driven by growing employments and increased rates. Non-airline revenue, which makes up sixty eight percent of total operating revenue, is up about one point two million or six point three percent. Non-operating revenue is up year over year, and that's driven by increased increased parking usage, higher rates, and increased concession sales. That puts total operating revenue up about one point five million or five point six percent compared to twenty twenty three. So within airline revenue, we have terminal rents and landing fees. So we're going to take a deeper dive into both. Terminal rent, which makes up sixty percent of airline revenue, is up about one hundred and forty nine thousand or two point nine percent. And that is driven by increased terminal space rents. Terminal rent is also up about sixteen point nine percent from twenty twenty one. Landing fees, which make up forty percent of airline revenue, are up about one hundred and ninety six thousand or five point eight percent. And that's because of more employments combined with higher rates. Total landing fees are also up about forty two point six percent from twenty twenty one. As you can see from the bottom chart, airline revenue, both terminal rents and landing fees have been steadily coming up since the time of COVID. In non-airline revenue, we have parking, rail cars, concessions, and then our other revenue category, which is made of leases, fuel fees, land sales, and other revenue on sale. Overall, non-airline revenue is up about one point two million or six point three percent. It's driven by parking concessions and other non-airline revenue. Parking is up seven hundred and eighty four thousand or ten point three percent. It's driven by more frequent usage and higher rates. rates. Rental car revenue actually actually decreased 54,000 or 1.8%. That's due to slightly less usage. Concessions increased 171,000 or 17.6% left thanks to more staffing, which keeps the concession areas open longer and in turn earn more revenue. And all other revenues increased about 257,000 or 3.9%. It's due to ground leases, hangar rents, and other investments. Some examples are, as Dan mentioned, Joby and Sierra Nevada Corporation expanding their presence at the airport. And we have the new Al Jones hangar at Wright Brothers Airport. So as mentioned before, we drew down about 3.8 million in relief funds in 2024. So in total, we've drawn down a little over $27.7 million from repairs, from ARPA and Krista funding. And then unfortunately, 2024 was the last year we were able to draw down relief funds. Moving over to the expense side, we'll look at personnel first. In total, personnel expenses up about 810,000 or 8.5% compared to 2023. Wages are up 814,000 or 39.9%. This is because of increased staffing and the reacquisition of garage services. Persons are up as well, about 159,000 or 10.4%, and that's just tied to increased wages. Overtime is actually down 221,000 or 29.6%. And that's because we're closer to being fully staffed, so we're assigning less overtime. And insurance is slightly up at 58,000 or 4.1%. And you can take a look at the bottom chart and see that each category has trended overtime since 2020. So for contracts and materials, in total, we're up about 2.1 million or 16.6%. And this slide just breaks it down a little further. The biggest drivers here are maintenance, professional services, supplies, and utilities. Maintenance is up about 498,000 or 27.3% because of the work we are doing. We restore and improve the baggage system, the jet bridges, and the escalators. Professional services is up about 805,000 or 50.5%. But mainly in security, we've got a lot of additional security activities going on, such as the employee screening program. Supplies are up about 277,000 or 34.6% because of all these, the traditional maintenance work that we're doing. Supplies just kind of follow along with that. And utilities are up about 631,000 or 33.4% because we've had higher electric, water, and sewer bills in 2024. So as we talked about before, overall employments are up about 3.9% higher than 2023. Biggest change was in United. They added about 21,000 or 18,000. They added more capacity in their flights out of Dayton. American increased about 14,000 or 4.6%. American still holds the highest margin of of employments for us at about 323,000 for 2024. Delta had a 5.6 thousand count increase or 4% over 2023. And Allegiant actually went down in employments compared to 2023 by about, or negative 14.7%. You notice the chart up here shows the trend by quarter from 2020 onward, which you can see is steadily improving since the low point in quarter two of 2020. So here's the 2024 wrap up. As we mentioned before, employments went up along with rates and utilization. So airline revenue is up. We're also up in parking and concession. And we drew down our final ARPA and Krista grant funding. Expenses are up. We talked about how personnel is up in wages and fringes, but down in overtime. Contract and materials is up in maintenance, professional services, supplies, and utilities. And capital projects are down just due to the timing of our capital projects. So all in all, that gives us a 1.3 million surplus to end the year. And as always, we're always looking for cost-saving or value-generating opportunities to keep the airport growing. We want to attract more business and of course, we want to accomplish some accomplishments. Here are some airport accomplishments. From a development perspective, we signed a new lease and New Aviation assumed the lease we had for Stevens Aviation. This all happened in February of 2024. Sierra Nevada Corporation also broke ground on their third and fourth hangers in October of 2024. Projects and funding goes, we applied for about 19.8 million in grants and were awarded 10.8 million, which is an approval rate of about 54.3%. We were also awarded about 2 million in state funding. We completed some capital projects, such as the terminal apron base four, terminal drive resurfacing, and replacing the wild like fence at Dayton Wright Brothers Airport. Under marketing, the Fly My Airport app on our website was launched in February of 2024 and has received almost 86,000 clicks since then. It has led to at least 552 immediate purchases. And then the airshow was also a success of '24. We hosted over 75,000 guests in June. And as Dan mentioned, we've got the air camp for kids going on. We did three in 2024, and we're actually planning to do four, slated for four in 2025. So we closed 2024 on a positive note. There's lots of interesting stuff going on at the airport, and we have positive revenue streams. That's the end of my presentation. So with that, do you guys have questions for us?
Questions? Misses? Mr. Pechal?
Welcome. Nice to see you here today.
I'm a little Mr. Shaw's tickled with the air camp.
I am. Thank you for that.
We got one, actually. I was really glad to see concessions did really well in the terminal. And you mentioned that increased staffing enabled to be larger, which makes total sense. But is there more there to get? Would more increased staffing bring more revenue? Or are we sort of leveling out at this point? Is it hard to tell?
So for concessions for the increased staffing?
Yeah.
We do have other programmed areas that are leasable in the space. So obviously, we're trying to attract more business to come in and provide the concessions. So in turn, that yes, that would create more jobs, more staffing, and more services available for the customers.
Hopefully, somebody, some of the intrepid few watching this will hear that and sign up.
The other strategy, Commissioner, is as employments go up, that's more traffic. And so that will help us to attract more and diverse concession ears. And that, of course, then adds to the overall environment for the customer, but it also provides additional revenue for the airport as well.
Great. I like the sound of that.
So what's happening with the?
They just, they decrease their frequency to some of their markets in Florida. So it's, it's nothing, a lot of this is seasonal. So we'll see some increases coming up here as the summer months come. I always want to go to Florida as well as during the winter months, wanting to go to Florida, although now that it snows and has ice in Florida. Whether that's going to attract people. Some of that is just seasonal.
The escalator on B?
Yes. We have a brand new escalator on B that is working and has proven to be reliable. We have a second one that is being installed on concourse B. We have one under construction right now on concourse A and the second one. I should just say the project should be complete with all four escalators by May 5th of this year.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, aviation. We'll invite our water team up now. I'll just leave that there, Anna.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Mike Pile, Director of Department of Water. I have with me Keisha Kenny. Do you know her? She's our Division Manager for Supply and Treatment. She's going to kind of be walking through the details today. But all in all, the year for 2024 was about what we planned, and it actually turned out a little bit better. We were using our cash reserve as we had planned to, so that we did so well, we didn't need to use the cash reserve that we tried. I'll let Keisha kind of walk through this one.
Can you guys hear me? Because I know that tends to be a problem.
Get that mic close, please.
All right.
Hold over to you.
All right. So what we're going to do is I'm going to go ahead and take you guys over to our overview. Again, as Mike said, this was pretty good, as we predicted. Our revenues are actually up 13.6% or 8.3 million dollars. Some of the contributing factors to this would be our city of Dayton's fees, which we were up about 11.4% or 3.3 million dollars. This was slightly higher than what we expected, but it was still right within what we were looking at. You can also see we have an increase in our other jurisdictions for our metered water, which was about 13.6% or about 3.3 million dollars. Another area that I wanted to point out where we have an increase is where you're going to look at our other charges. We had an increase there about 13.5% or about 1.3 million dollars. So overall, as you can see, our revenue is up. But if we go ahead and move over to our expenditures, those were up as well, about 11% or 6.3 million dollars. Some of the driving factors there were personnel, contracts, and materials. Our capital equipment looks like it's a huge increase, but it's really not. It's just more of a bill timing, and I'll talk a little bit about that later. But although we did have that increase, as Mike mentioned, we did not use our cash reserves to cover this increase. So now we're going to move over to some of the details. So again, as I stated before, our revenues were up about 82 million dollars or 13.6%. City customers were up. A part of that increase that we saw were city customers was going to be a change in bill timing, which we have some additional routes. But also you can add in the revenue increase that we have, the rate increase from 2023 into 2024, and that was probably about 5.4%. Sorry. That's 9%. That is a different one. So we had about 9% of our rate increase that we've seen year over year from the last three years. Also, what you have with our increases is what you have from our other jurisdictions, in particular, in County, where you could see we had an increase there of 13.8% or 3.3 million dollars. This was due to actually increased revenue, but also we had our rate increase there with them, which is about 12.6%. That is, is that whole group. And then with our other charges, we also have an increase there. As you guys have mentioned, over the last few quarters, we had live sales increases, which is a rate increase that we have every year. But we also had an increase in our lab services because we were a contract lab. And what we have here is increased customers. So we increased about 34%. And we've seen this increasing year over year. So our lab is actually filling a void of providing contract services to the region. And then we had some other increases on accounting principles and also due to more of our communities from part of our labor trades. So now that we've talked about revenue, let's move over to expenditures. So for here, some of our expenditures again were up. But this is due to personnel costs. We've managed to fill some physicians, which are plenty for operations. That is always good. But we also had to use additional overtime because we're still not staffed at a level that does not require additional overtime to make sure that we're operationally viable. Our fringes and benefits more in line with what the rest of the city was seeing, but you also had our merit increases in cost of living. If we move over to contracts and materials, those were up as well. But again, a part of this was bill timing. It was also, if you look, we did some security enhancements. So we bought two cameras that'll actually comply with some preemptive regulation changes that we're seeing. But also, we had to do some repairs to our fences at Ottawa Yards because apparently cutting our fences seems like a problem. The other thing that we had some increases would be with chemical cost. On the water side, it was going to be probably fluoride, which was just an inflationary increase, not usage, just inflationary. Not as bad as what we've seen in the past years with chlorine, but just enough to be notable, I noticed. Another increase we had, we purchased some additional PFAS testing equipment. As you guys know, we're the first in the state to have this certification. And this is not just for municipal lab, it's also commercial. So this again is showing us that we are thinking ahead, we're being on the cutting edge, or becoming another regional resource. To offset some of these increases, we did have block rating savings that happened with sustainability and purpose of working together to give us more of a predictability with our savings, but also to make our routes very predictable and be very down with costs, which is about 170,000 dollars. So these were our trends on the water side. So now we're going to go to the other side of the drain and talk about sewer. I'm sorry. Yes, the other side. So now that we're on to the sanitary sewer front, again, this one also finished up as well. As you can see here, we finished up about 13.7% or about 5.6 million dollars. This increase was seen with city of Dayton. Customers also with other jurisdictions. So it was 18, 8.5% increase with Dayton customers. But then with our other jurisdictions, it was about 11.3% or about 1.8 million dollars. If you go down, if we're looking at our uses, we probably spent, we had an increase there of about 4.4% or about 1.8 million dollars. To accomplish this additional increase in spending, we didn't use our cash reserves, which again, was the same thing we did on the water side. So now we'll move to some of the details. As previously stated, we were up about 13.8% or 5.7 million dollars. Again, you had the increase that we had with city of Dayton customers. This included our rate increase of about 5.5%. But also, this included additional routes that showed that we had additional revenues. Other jurisdictions, that was up as well, but this included additional routes, but it also included a rate increase in additional uses as well. We also had an increase in some of our other charges, and this would be because of our biological oxygen demand and suspended solids, which is generally charged to our, for our industrial customers. But again, everything was possible. So now if we go over to our expenditure side, again, our personnel was up, and that was due to us filling vacancies, which is always good. We had increased overtime because again, although we're filling our vacancies for our operations, we're still not covering the 24 operations as we need to do. So we do still have those covered. Our fringes and whatnot are still something that we're seeing for us the city, where you just have your line moving from here. Our contracts and materials were also up. But again, this was because we did some of our projects in-house. One project in particular utilized our internal staff to get the project done. This was over at our water facility. We had an irrigation basin that ended up taking on water because we had a water main break. So as you know, our Blue Note staff is incredibly good at rig clearing breaks. They came over, they fixed the break, but unfortunately, the water that actually came into the basin went down and damaged some of the electrical. So our internal staff did that as well. So since we did all this work in-house, we were able to leave that basin up. We didn't have any regulatory problems, and we were able to get it done quicker. So it shows that by doing these projects in-house, it's a saving not only regulatory-wise, but also monetary. We saved about $100,000 by doing this in-house as opposed to contracting it out. So that was, yes, that was, that was, this is a testament to our staff that we have on hand. Also, we had some increases with professional services. And one thing I would like to note here is our associate interns. So as you know, we talked about how we're having trouble filling our physicians. But by adding interns, we're actually starting to fill those physicians and showing that we're doing more outreach towards universities and colleges and our high schools. So I'm hoping that as we continue to do this increased outreach and get younger people into the field, it'll stop some of the vacancies that we're seeing as we continue to go. And then supplies and materials, we had some increases there. Again, chemicals, one of the big drivers to some of the supplies and materials that we have here. And this was more due to a regulatory change for us to treat for phosphorus. We had to change our chemicals, which is something that was a little bit more expensive. But this was also offset by our utility block rate savings, again, purchasing and sustainability. So overall, for water, for 2024, we managed to have increases in both our water and sewer. And again, this was due to both city customers and our own jurisdictions. We also had some other outside lime cells and video deets. Our personnel costs were up, which is always good, especially when we're filling positions. But we also had overtime costs because we're still below where we need to have sufficient staffing. Contracts and materials were up, but some of that was offset by our utility block savings. And to accomplish all this, we did not have to use our cash balance for 2024.
Questions? Commissioner? Commissioner Trump?
No, thank you.
Where are we with the project of capturing the gas with the third party?
I just sent Joe. He's got our first check. Was it as big as expected? Not yet. The first check was just for the actual gas. The renewable energy credits, that's the big one that's coming. We should get that one in a couple of weeks.
Timey question.
So there are three revenue sources. That's the lime, it's the gas, and it's the lab, the outsourcing one. Those are the three revenue sources.
At what point, we sold fertilizer, like different fertilizer, I believe? Maybe it's been too long. Is that beyond institutional memory?
I will say that we have beneficial reuse that we use for our biosolids, and we also use it at our Route 4 Looping, which is a part of our lime reclamation facility, and that's used on farmers' fields. I will say probably in the way back, we used to actually sell lime to farmers that they would actually come to the lime plant on Ottawa Yards and buy bags of lime and take them out to their fields.
I do have one, actually, comment and question. I'm really glad that interns are working out. I know that some employers actually have a target for a certain percentage of interns that they want to end up hiring. Do we have a target like that for ours when we bring them on, or are we just sort of in the early stages of incorporating interns?
I will say we're probably in the early stages, but it would be great if we could start to develop a pathway to bring them on because it cuts down on the amount of time you have to train. But it also starts to build some form of loyalty to the company, and you start to build a culture with them if they start with you and then you work them through the ranks. So it would be great if we could work on that type of pipeline, but we're still in early stages.
I highly recommend it. I should probably turn this off. And I really do recommend it. A company that I'm very familiar with does interviews for interns, just like regular employees, you know, in the, in the summer before their, well, actually, during their junior year. And if they perform very well during their summer internship, then we offer them a job. And we, like, over half come and work for us, for the company I'm familiar with. But it's a really great program, and we've gotten some, the company's got really great kids. I think it's a good idea if we can develop that.
That is a great idea because we get an opportunity to train them on how we process things. They're familiar with it, so they walk in day one able to contribute as a regular employee. So that's our goal, to grow, to try to fill these vacancies, grow them from within.
You know, we just wanted to congratulate you on the entire city's work that you're doing as far as recruitment, training some of the young people. I know you had probably about four or five sessions over at your shop with young people from Dayton Public Schools and with all the departments that we have in the city, police, fire, different department heads. And I think it creates a good pipeline in terms of making them aware of some of the kind of things that the city does as far as work is concerned. So you don't have to go too far, okay, in terms of getting some of those individuals some work. And plus, those dollars stay right here in our community. So I always like that as well. Any other questions? Thomas? Travis, anyone?
I have one more. I have one more thing. Thank you, water team and everyone for the great presentations this afternoon. At your desks, you should have the city manager's report that I am going to be adding to the calendar tonight and requesting your approval. This is work that we had, that we have accelerated to get done by May prior to NATO. This was work that was already in the pipeline, already funded. But we want to make sure that because it's a beautification project, it's removing some, all of the 1980s pavers that are downtown and not in great shape, replacing them with sidewalk, adding landscaping, planters, you know, through, you know, around the sidewalks on Main Street from Third and Fourth, the Third and Fourth blocks, and Third Street from Ludlow to Jefferson. So this is a significant beautification project. We want to get as much time for the contractor to get in there and get this done so we can assure, be assured that it's done before May and the guests come. And it is, it did go through our normal process of bidding, and this is the lowest and best bidder. So I'll be adding it to the calendar this evening. Please see me if you have any questions before the commission meeting, as you review it.
Thank you.